Hi and welcome to Hometown Chats. This is Andrea French, Executive Director for TAG Transportation Advocacy Group. And today, we are joined by Councilmember David Robinson for at-large two district. Welcome.
Hello Andrea, good to be with you.
Thank you so much for your time today. We know that you are so busy providing leadership and service in a new way. And so we thank you for that. And we kind of want to know what your days look like.
Well, it's interesting you should say that. We've, we're operating as a city, as you understand, with all of the interesting new features of the coronavirus and COVID-19, and what that has brought for us. With the mayor and his declaration of working from home and various work safe things that we're all embracing. We have gone to generally a virtual platform for our committee meetings, yet we continue to do some business in the City Hall chamber with the obligation to house public meetings. So today, for instance, as it is Wednesday, we had our legislative session this morning. It was about a normal-sized agenda with a really fairly normal-looking set of items before us. Everything from traditional road and storm sewer infrastructure issues to all the other tricks and trades of our practice. But it was, it's normal, yet not normal, as you understand. And going to work is different. I think, you know, working from home is different. And so it's a combination of the new reality.
Right, yeah. And I think you, your point about it now feeling normal, right? This is about a month now where we've been in this. We've moved, we are still in triage in so many ways, but personally, we are now adapting. And while that is a good thing, that is also, no, we don't necessarily want to adapt that much, right? We want to go, want to go back a little bit to normal ways of life. But are we now finding some consistency and some rhythm with this kind of virtual world that we're in, and some of the challenges that it presents, and some of the opportunities?
That's right. In fact, it's, my feeling is that it's accelerated a lot of what was in the works. You know, telecommuting is something that the mayor asked me very specifically about. As you know, I've been involved with transportation projects, certainly with TAG, but that stems from my interest in practice as an architect. But with the committee that I chair for council, the TTI Committee, Transportation First, the mayor's asked that I really focus on that second T, which is technology. So it was, I think, a week and a half ago now that we had the very first virtual meeting of the council committees. And in fact, it was on telecommuting that we, we kicked the new reality off. And that we heard from our Human Resources Group, the Chief of Staff of that department for the city spoke about the rights and some of the real basic parameters around which the City of Houston employees are allowed to work from home, or encouraged to work from home. Of course, there's a number of our jobs that are considered essential. Mine, for instance, I think as, as our municipal government, and the fact that the show must go on for all of us in, in our roles is, is very critically important. But it's, it was followed by some very practical meetings, items on the agenda, that is, that were presented by the Director of the HITS Program, which stands for the Houston Information Technology System. And that's a wonderful woman named Lisa Kent, Director Lisa Kent, who told us about how the platform that we use, unlike this Zoom call, the City of Houston has, you know, I think something close to 20,000 applications of Microsoft Teams, this, that comes with all of our subscription to the, to the Microsoft platform that the city operates on. And so that was then an orientation of how we do these meetings, and the kind of functionality that we can have to, to do the things of, of working remotely and safely. So that works pretty well. It was a little bit ironic, because that meeting was, in fact, filmed in City Hall chambers. So there we were, talking about telecommuting from City Hall.
Right, interesting. Okay. So that's, that's actually very timely, because TAG has been having discussions about some, some newer policies that we're going to begin to shape and impact transportation. And telecommuting is absolutely one of them. You know, it's another tool in the toolbox, you kind of mitigate some of the congestion issues that we face. And are businesses really getting to experience the reality of what that feels like, and quite frankly, the success of it?
Absolutely. There's some things that we're realizing now. Certainly, everyone who does go out in the car knows what it's like for there to be less traffic on the roads. I think many of us have been remarking, both in public forums, the news, about the clean air that we appear to be breathing, and the lack of ozone, and some of what's happened as a byproduct of this isolation. But I think in terms of transportation projects, it appears that some of our business as usual is going forward. TechDOT has not really slowed down, nor has the City of Houston slowed down any of our construction projects, which in fact, provides a way for us to really make some hay right now, while things are somewhat at a low publicly. And I think that's good. It's, there are also others that are really questioning whether, for instance, the new normal may involve a pattern that we're just beginning to touch on, and that this really will be something that more people will be approved to work from home. And I think that's something that, that goes with the experiment. You know, offices and businesses that have been reluctant to allow employees from home now have a real track record where it has either worked or not. And I think in the case of my staff members, a lot of the business that I'm conducting with my company and with others, seems to be bearing out that people are responsible beings, and they will get their work done. And it may even be the case that we're all working a little bit harder to make up for some of the lost opportunities.
Well, and I think we probably underestimated people's, you know, hunger for connectivity amongst each other, right? And so there, there was the concern that, you know, people working from home would maybe check out, or things wouldn't get done. And it's quite the opposite, because we all have that kind of instinctual need to want to feel connected to what's going on around us. So I think as we move forward, you know, TAG and others, HGAC, the city, are going to really look at some great policies and really incentives to have businesses really promote the telecommuting much more, and make it more of a, of a normal practice. Like you mentioned, clean air.
I think that's right. I know there was a, there was an article in this morning's paper, I don't know if you saw it, it was an editorial from some individuals who spoke out, I think cautiously, and with concern about public meetings, and whether the sort of urgent nature of business would be something that we would perhaps deal with differently, namely, truly focus only on the urgent business, and questioning some of those things that might not be as high priority, to ensure that the same type of public participation is provided for in our meetings. And I'm thinking this was a specific concern about what the HGAC is doing with our Transportation Policy Council that I'm an officer for. And I will tell you that in the case of the one meeting we've had since the stay-at-home order has been in place, was an experiment. It was not, it was not perfect. And I know from, from being on the line, that it took a number of reminders. And I think at some point, I almost, I think I raised my voice and, and said, you know, turn your phone off, and if you don't know how, find somebody who does.
I was on that call, so.
Were you on that call?
I was on that call, yes. There was, some of it's entertaining, some of it is, you know, we gotta, we gotta figure out how to do this right, so we can, you know, be appropriate and, and get business done. So I hear you.
Probably don't need to remind you, but I think someone was having their breakfast and maybe belched a little bit there at one point. I don't, I don't need that. I don't know. You know, nothing I can do without that.
Right, no, it was, so I think, so we could go back to that second T in your committee that you chair, right? So that the technology piece that you mentioned, which it all intertwines, right? So if we talk about kind of the telecommuting and moving towards a more of a policy to kind of mitigate some of the congestion and other issues that we find that are happening in our city and region, do we also have to then make a commitment that the technology is accessible for all?
Let's, let's say yes. I'd like to say yes. I think it's, it's a challenge, and that's part of what that, that orientation session for our TTI Committee was to really talk about the, the social etiquette. You know, we've heard so much about social distancing. And I've had some doctor friends point out that they think that's not a great term for it, because actually, social, we're still looking for social proximity. But what we're looking for is physical distancing. We, we don't want to breathe on one another, or cough on one another, or spread germs, but we don't want to socially isolate ourselves. And that, that's part of, I think, I will say, a proud tradition of Texas, and, and the friendly nature of our people and the way we do business, sometimes with not a whole lot more than a handshake. And that's the, that's the nature of some of the good traditions of, of Texas business that I know I've been raised on, let's say. But the, the reality is that here across the line now, you and I are having a conversation involving a huge number of people, potentially. And I hope that's the case. But it's, you know, it's an intimate conversation that can be shared broadly. And, you know, as parents, you know, and I know, that there's a lot of ways to be in touch and reach out. And our children are really at the advent of that. So now, as someone who's an officer in some of these groups, and a chairman, and a, and a council member with so many constituents and so forth, we have to make sure that those who have perhaps some built-in isolation in their world, whether it's because they don't have appropriate or adequate access to the internet, or maybe their go-to method was at the public library, which is now closed and hard for them to access, or they just don't have a good computer, or their monitor is bad, or, you know, they're on a flip phone and not a smartphone, or, you know, I think, you know, a rotary phone, heaven forbid.
Right, right. And some of our seniors, for sure, yeah. And I think, you know, I was reading an article that was talking about how, when we've recovered from major recessions, depressions, right, we can point to different industries that really helped lift us out. And in the past, it has often been infrastructure, right? And that I, and infrastructure can mean a lot of different things, right? So it can be, you know, kind of the highway system, which, you know, kind of 1900, you know, 1950s highway system, and kind of building that out. You know, is it now, is it, is the, the infrastructure of kind of the broadband, right? And making sure that there is more access for people and the more vulnerable populations. And so I was reading that that's, that's kind of what people are thinking is going to be part of what lifts us out. And it's also as a job stimulator. So, you know, infrastructure in general has always been a job stimulator for economic recovery. And so, you know, we at TAG are also looking at some of the policies and some of the decisions being made, and how that investment, you know, some of the stimulus and the relief packages that are coming down, those dollars are important to relieve some of the businesses, but also to invest back into the continuation of the build-out of our infrastructure in so many different ways.
I think that's right. Again, Andrea, the, the fact, again, that we may be at a moment where things are being accelerated, I think, you know, mentioned maybe less traffic on the road right now, but the way in which this is now suggesting we can work from home, you know, some of the capacity issues that have driven highway may begin to influence things differently. I'm not saying more or less, but in a way, I think the ride-sharing capacities that we've had, and a lot of the multimodal connectivity that I know the current administration of our city has been emphasizing, and, and I feel very strongly about as well, the, the shift to some of the more recreational modes of transportation, the hiking bike trails. And, and I think some of us who make a, make a habit of talking about transportation, when we're thinking about infrastructure as the economic stimulators, stimulator, it's really something that we want to do, knowing that there are projects that continue to flow, but it's also something that can bring us out. I'd like to emphasize that this now, with that potential, should incentivize our interest in pursuing a very cutting-edge and forward-thinking set of details, specifications. I think one massive infrastructure project that's coming along, that I know the mayor and I have not lost our focus on, although it's been quiet for a few months here, is the I-45 project. And there's just no way, as he and I discussed recently, that we are going to allow ourselves to take our eye off the ball. That, that project is coming, and neither he nor I have any, any misgivings that this is going to keep coming. You know, this is TechDOT, and this is Texas. And Governor Abbott, with his interest in getting our economic engines fired up again, I think we have one project that we can be relatively sure will not be slowing down. So that again goes to some of those folks from our community who've been concerned about the transparency, and the way in which the public can continue to voice their concerns. I think in the case of the City of Houston, and some of our private partners, we've done, from my perspective at least, a heroic, excellent job of engaging the population with a series of community meetings that have been facilitated. And I think that's really, you know, interesting in the way that it's given us a way to focus on, you know, some new, some new potential for, for where we go with that. And, and I think that's where we're really encouraged, again, by where TechDOT has some good, good listening that's been going on. And I'm very optimistic about our potential to have that bear some grapefruit.
Well, that's great. And I think you're right. You know, there's things that are just, they're still moving forward. A lot of projects, projects I-45, you know, is kind of our Houston one. There's ones all around the state that are continuing to move forward. And that will be, you know, that will continue to be our, our job stimulator, too, are those road construction projects, as well as additional infrastructure opportunities. So, you know, I really commend your, your leadership on, on that project, and ensuring that the communities that are, you know, mostly impacted do have that voice. Because we, the process is so important for that project, and for many more in the future, where we really want to make sure that we have that transparency.
I really appreciate that. I know that's something that I think your audience and your group will have keen interest in. And I will say, it's maybe too early to draw any final conclusion, but I'm very encouraged by some of the details that I see coming out. And that really means not something standard and out of the toolbox that we know, but really things that are unique to the situation. And the spirit with which we've heard TechDOT engaging with this, I think they understand that this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the City of Houston, and to get this right, and to show that we're, you know, sort of thinking carefully about these massive investment of dollars, but also of the way that Houstonians move around. This is a, this is a moment in time that will not repeat itself, and we need to take it seriously.
Yeah, absolutely. And talking about kind of investing and, and keeping things moving forward, we know that the budget discussions have begun, and, and that's, you know, here we are again, and it's that time of year, and we are now in the middle of a pandemic. So can you share a little bit about how the pandemic has helped frame some of those discussions, and really what that looks like right now?
Yes. Well, again, with the legislative session this morning on council, it was really the prime focus of the mayor's report. And I think some of us who had a moment to follow up, wanted to hear specifically from the mayor about what we've had to put out there as really the first responding municipality. And I think, by and large, we're all, you know, guardedly optimistic and guardedly pleased with the relatively low number of COVID-19, both infections, as well as deaths. And we've been blessed so far. So we want to, we want to make sure that our timing on that is right. But we've also had to do some things that have been very difficult, both socially, as well as financially. I think to, for the mayor to have called off the rodeo a week into a three-week schedule, in some, in some ways, I think that was very questionable from, from his political livelihood. And, but it was the right thing to do. And I think it, he, his ability to listen to the experts, the, the doctors and healthcare practitioners who are teaching us to wash our hands, and, and teaching us to use a credit card maybe instead of dollar bills. And, and I think that's, that's a way that we can, you know, do some very practical things. What we're going to have to do for the finances, and with this year's rite of passage, that you're right to point to, we're, we're in the middle of our budget workshop process. We look at every department in the city. We scrutinize every one of their budgets, and we're trying to embrace a zero-based budgeting format at the City of Houston, where you don't assume last year's budget. You start with a goose egg, and you think, what do you need from scratch going up? And that, it's really an experiment. It's, it's a lesson in economics, but it's also something that I think has helped a lot of our department directors think about a really important baseline. And this is not by any means the first year where things have been tight at the City of Houston. It's my seventh year on council, and I don't remember a year when we had, you know, more than we needed, right? It was, it's always a matter of, I think, what I think of my former colleague CEO Bradford, that used to emphasize core values and core services, really is the phrase. And so that's, it's not a lot of pretty stuff, but that's our solid waste. It's, it's our public safety, our police and fire, and emergency technicians here. But it's pretty cut and dry. And we're not doing a lot of the things that I think Houston has accelerated on. You know, I'm thinking about the Super Bowl, some of the great festivals and conferences we've had. I do serve on the Houston First Board, in addition to some of the things I do for council, and, and our tourism industry, our hospitality industry, or they're just taking it so squarely on the chin right now, that it, that is the first area to suffer, because the hotels are not filled, and our venues are vacant, and our cultural assets are really suffering right now. So the city feels that. There's no sort of line item that I've understood yet, coming down from the federal government, that pays the difference, although there are the 3P program with bank loans and small business assistance, generally speaking, is, is doing a lot. And I think in the case of Houston First, it's allowed us to re neg on furloughs that were put into place right after things went south. And so those people have been brought back. And that's, that's a wonderful opportunity, if we can, if we can make good on it, and hopefully do the hard work of keeping our distance and letting this thing pass over as much as it can.
Right. And I think to that point, too, one of the things that I have personally struggled with, and I know some of the businesses, and just the community, too, is a lot of back and forth as to when we will reopen for business, right? And so, you know, there's the state's message, there's the federal message, there's what we, what we're seeing and feeling locally. And so I don't know if you can share kind of your perspective on, on that, because it's been a bit confusing.
Yeah, that's putting it mildly. I hear you. Dr. Fauci has become all of our good friend, I think, on the television that I can't turn off, at least for news, news time. And I think while we have had different messages from different states, certainly the federal government, and, and individual cities, I think cities are where a lot of important leadership takes place. And there have been some great editorial writing about that, and that I'm grateful for in many ways. I think the, the message is clear, as I've been able to hear it, is, is a fairly simple one, namely, we shouldn't rush it. And if we do, we do so at our peril. And that this is the, you know, the biggest mistake we could make would be to come back too soon. And I think we have done well by erring on the side of cautiousness, at least so far. And I think if, if, if infections and death are any measure of the proportionality, I'm proud of our response. And I think that speaks highly of what Judge Dalgo and Mayor Turner have, have done to lead. But I think their foremost instinct has been to follow the lead of our scientists and doctors. And heaven knows, we are blessed with the Texas Medical Center. And I think it's another, I think, key to the way that we respond and come back from this hiatus, this period of change. And, you know, it's so nice to be talking with you and, and the TAG Group about the importance of change to the areas of transportation, and certainly the technology that we've already addressed. But that infrastructure, what it means for Houston, it certainly means the roads, the TechDOT projects, but it also means the port. It means the Texas Medical Center. Some of the opportunities we have with biomedical research, and our science, and being here in this blessed place with so much knowledge in our institutions at the TMC, that, I think, is perhaps part of the secret sauce of what will allow Houston to bounce back in a way that I think will surprise a lot of folks who may be skeptical about what the energy industry can do. I think we're already, with, with leadership from many of the energy companies, we are already well aware of the fact that oil and gas are not our future, but it really is about alternatives. And so how, how we embrace some of that change is, is going to be another test for us.
Absolutely. So one of the campaigns that we're working on at TAG is to talk about how our infrastructure is continuing to move us forward amidst the crisis. And so all of those pillars that you just mentioned, we've kind of coined it, you know, so Houston heals, Houston powers, Houston fuels, and Houston delivers are the, kind of the four hallmarks of our message. So everything from, you know, moving supplies, goods, food, you know, freight, our ports, and healing, right? I mean, through our med center, all of that, and kind of all of that sitting on top of our infrastructure, and kind of how that's, we're still, we're still moving. And, and what the message to the federal government really is, you know, we, we put people to work, and we will continue to put people to work through all of these different sectors and industries.
Absolutely. One of my favorite ones, too, that I don't want to pass over too lightly, which, which is with the port and the dredging of the ship channel, and some of the opportunity we have there, again, to accelerate into, you know, even further leadership, and to widen and deepen the canal, and to think about that channel, what it can do to reach the Gulf, and some of the potential for those dredge spoils to build up as a potential additional source of protection from storms coming out of the Gulf. Some of our federal projects with what the Army Corps is doing with the coastal spine, and protecting our West Bay infrastructure and citizens, and some of the, the cities that are very vulnerable, you know, thinking about some of our neighbors in that regard. And we all have to pull together in, in the greater region.
Right, right, absolutely. So we've talked about a lot of different things. You have to know a lot of things every day, right? And even more now, we've layered on, you know, kind of the crisis piece. So in your day-to-day, how do you kind of find that, that clarity and that focus, or that resolve, right? And all my conversations, we've all experienced, you know, kind of the up and down every day. And we have to find new tools to keep our sanity. So I don't know if you have any words of wisdom?
Well, I think before we started recording, you and I both spoke about our family, and, you know, that, how that is an how that is an anchor for us as a, you know, a recently empty nested single parent. I am blessedly with my daughter back from college, in her case, from New York City. So fortunately, we, we did self quarantine for 14 days at the direction of our chief medical officer, David Purce, said with no hint of any smile on his face whatsoever. He told me matter of factly how seriously I needed to take our quarantine. And, and that has been, you know, very different, but I will tell you, it's been amazing. It's wonderful to have my daughter around. It's bonus time. And she's not going out very much and I don't have to tell her no very often. And we're getting, we're getting along great. You know, I think this was a really interesting week for our faith tradition with Easter services online. I've been a fairly faithful member of a Bible study that I've been a part of for 20 years. And I'm now attending that with my father joining remotely from New England where he lives. And I've been able to join him on similar things. And we're having group chats with the technology that you and I are talking about. And celebrated my brother's birthday with an online discussion of all the cousins and all the aunts and uncles. So I'm, I'm really trying to look on the bright side. And again, focus on the beautiful weather we've been having in Houston. Every time I speak with any one of my friends from around the country or around the world, I find myself repeating just what a beautiful day it is. It's such a, it's a lovely refrain to have.
It is. Absolutely. Yeah. And, you know, we've also learned a lot about ourselves, you know, through this process. And I, I've learned, you know, I am capable of a lot more than I thought with balancing, you know, homeschooling and work and so much. And so, you know, I'm curious too, if you, your daughter, you know, the two of you, is there anything surprising or with your colleagues or community?
You know, one thing I will tell you, just because I'm, I think I'm in, certainly enjoying talking to you, but on all of these Zoom and WebEx and Microsoft Teams and other things that we have, I love looking at people's library books. All the books that you've got up on the shelf, I get to see what you're reading or, or you know, what's up there is a.
Friends that I'm reading? No.
Or if it's a prop, it's a good looking prop. I've got my window here and I've got lots of books sort of across the room here. And I've been thinking, I may have to, you know, switch around here a little bit to show my collection of fancy architecture books.
Right, right. No, we, we are kind of getting a nice personal Zoom, right? Into, into people's, people's lives. And, you know, my son did his first, he's in first grade and they did a first Zoom classroom. And it was just so, the, the innocence with which these children are experiencing this. And, you know, often they're in their, they're in their rooms, they're in their homes. And, you know, their friends, they get to see their bedrooms and their homes and all their stuff. And, you know, it, I was, I was very surprised at the emotions that kind of came through with that. And, you know, you wouldn't normally get to see that.
No, I hadn't thought of that. That's wonderfully intimate in some ways, yet completely antiseptic and.
Yeah, right. Yeah. So, you know, all kinds of, of great gratitudes and joys to have during all of this. And I, I think that's what's really keeping us, you know, it's kind of threading through our daily lives and, and keeping us connected and.
The other thing too, that's probably worth mentioning, it's not all sunshine, right? Obviously, the sickness that's out there, the intimacy with which we're able to share the pain of those who are suffering. You know, I know that that is also the case, you know, I'm giving you the general story about my daughter and I getting along here. But there's also been some really strange moments where, you know, anger will flare up. And, you know, it, it's just strange. I think sometimes she and I, she's 20, so she's, you know, a conscious adult. And she and I will just look at each other after something and say like, wow, where did that come from? Or, you know, what was that about when we have a moment to pause and reflect on it? And I see that similarly with some of the interactions that are taking place on council, where it's clear that someone is frustrated about something, but it's disproportionate to whatever we're discussing. And one really needs to think of that in, in, in kind of the reaction that we're all having to this. But I, I wanted to say that because to the, to the goodness that you and I were just appreciating, you know, we're learning so much. I think whether you're in first grade, your son, and what they're learning through interaction across the internet and what we're now doing as adults who are more stuck in our ways or used to the ways of doing things that we've grown accustomed to. This is now, it's an opportunity for us to really embrace a new set of realities. And I think your group is one that is particularly poised to benefit in significant ways.
Yeah, yeah. Well, well, thank you for that. And, you know, it is a daily, you know, wake up, revisit each day with kind of a, a, a fresh, trying to have a fresh perspective, but you're absolutely right. You know, people are coping in different ways and we have to be so mindful. And we never know what people are facing in their individual communities and lives. And so we just have to treat each other with a lot more kindness and gentleness, you know, quite frankly. So thank you for those reminders. And those are all my questions for, for today. I, we appreciate your time, your leadership and your continued commitment to transportation and infrastructure in all ways for, for Houston. And we hope to have more conversations in the future, hopefully in person.
My pleasure. This has been very enjoyable.
That was Home Side Chats. We hope you enjoyed our episode. This series would not be possible without the sponsorship and partnership of our mobility partners. We thank you for your membership and your support. Stay tuned for more episodes of Home Side Chats.